Good morning. I call to order the October 27, 2015, Slane County Commission Public Forum and Meeting. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I ask everybody to join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move next to the public forum. It's a time where citizens may speak on county government, on agendas that are, things that are not on the agenda today. It's normally limited to three minutes. Who would like to come forward at this time?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. This, these comments I'm ready to make are about being an American. It is my right to be uncommon if I can. I seek opportunity, not security. I do not wish to be a kept citizen, humbled and dulled by having the state look after me. I want to take the calculated risk, to dream and to build, to fail and succeed. I refuse to barter incentive for dull. I prefer the challenges of life to be, to the guaranteed existence, the thrill of fulfillment to the stale calm of utopia. I will not trade freedom for beneficence or my dignity for a handout. I will never cower before any master except God, nor bend to any threat. It is my heritage to stand erect, proud and unafraid, to think and act for myself, enjoy the benefits of my creations and to face the world boldly and say, "I, this I have done." I do not choose to be a common man. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are you buying lunch today, Ray?
Do I have to have a license?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
Yeah, Norman, that was Selina Candace. Last week he was talking about reducing jail population. But you need to look what the problem is and identify it first, then get rid of the problem. As population increases, as development increases, so does the population. Therefore, the problems are coming with you. You've got to stop the problem as it begins. Otherwise, it's just going to continue. So, we're going to start looking about solving the problem, not just pushing it aside. Do this, or do that, try this, try that. You still haven't eliminated the problem. That's, that's what it's going to be. It's, you'll never solve your problems unless you stop population growth.
Thank you, Norman.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. At this time, I'd like to speak to the meeting, the luncheon you had with the legislators. I think that was a great way to bring people together and I have a sense maybe there were some first-time conversations started, which is great. The public wasn't given a chance to speak to possible things legislators could do. I put before you a copy of a NACO, it's a lengthy brochure and if you wanted, it's available online, on how county jails and the Affordable Care Act are possible. And so, as the legislator, legislature is probably going to look at whether Kansas should remain exempt from the afford, or Medicaid, and we don't provide Medicaid services for adult seniors and Medicaid expansion. As they reconsider this, this has been, and I have multiple articles about this, where the jail, or the sheriffs or whoever is in charge of the jails have been quietly enrolling inmates on to the Affordable Care Act or Medicaid to be able to address the rising and unpredictable costs of, of the medical expenses that can show up. Separate from that, if, if the state doesn't look to expand Medicaid or, or do some of those things, maybe the insurance commissioner on the state level could look at doing some kind of self-insurance pool among all the counties to address those issues. So, you know, I'd just suggest you put that in the mix of, of topics that you might bring before the legislators. I have to admit, I was really disappointed and frustrated that the topic of overweight trucks didn't come up because I was, in case any of you forgot, I was going to bring that up. I kind of had a conversation with another individual who said that there was no way any of you were going to speak to the issue because of the influences of Carhill, ADM, the Farm Bureau, and some of that. Now, you know, in a case where maybe you just forgot, or things got crowded out, or whatever, there's no way of knowing. But I'm really disappointed that I kind of lost the discussion. I had higher aspirations for all of you. So, you know, I, I left feeling very disappointed. But there's a lot of importance to those discussions, and if you don't have those kind of group meetings very often, I would encourage that you do. When you go to Kansas Association of Counties, you might find out what they do about healthcare with the jails and some of that, or, you know, the overweight trucks. I would highly encourage all of the people who had specific ideas for legislators to do as Tom Arpke asked and put things in writing and send them letters and bring that stuff forward. If you have sample ballot or bill language, you know, provide that to them. Look at, if you can compare what's in the law currently and compare with what you'd like to see, that's even better. There's a lot that can be done through our legislators and there's still plenty of time to make things happen. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Karen.
Was this menu you gave us here, is that the jails menu evidently, right, correct?
Um, yeah. I put another handout in front of you. It really comes up in terms of the, the jail proposal. If you'd like, I'll just answer your question. At the very bottom of that menu, and it's upside down, you see that there's a stamp on it that says, "This is to be treated confidentially." Now, when I signed the release that I wouldn't release information inappropriately, I said, "I may share some of the information I get with the county commissioners." And so, as a result, they, they said, "We know that, we understand that, we acknowledge that." And I didn't get some of the information on purchase orders and invoices and inventory that I was seeking. But I share that on the, when you talk about reducing jail population, something as, as insignificant as a menu is protected. And some of it may have been proprietary information. This comes from their food service management company contractor. I find, you know, I don't know that you're particularly as interested in the date stamp on confidentiality as maybe you are in seeing that the inmates eat chili cheese fries as an entree, or nachos, or, or some of those kind of things.
French fries?
Yeah. Deep fat frying, that, that comes up. There's a huge amount of potatoes being served in the meals. There's very little other fruits and vegetables. All of this was in my report that I emailed a little of you back in March. The one thing I would call your attention to on this topic is, at some point, you're going to have to vote to renew that contract again in November-ish. The sheriff has said it's not going out for rebid. There isn't enough time to go out for rebid. And to be honest, with the California drought, food prices have changed radically. So, I kind of doubt that this menu I got back in February is anything like what's being served in the upcoming months. So, I picked that out just to serve multiple functions. The key reason I put it in front of you today, though, was, this talks about the jail. It talks about the kind of records and kind of the, the procedures. I can't speak to the sheriff's office procedures. But just to get the information you need, there are some, some challenges there.
All right. Thank you.
We let you have a little extra time because I asked that question and I appreciate, I appreciate this. This is interesting.
Well, I have four weeks of menus and I'd, I'd highly encourage, you know, I wanted to kind of give you all four, but I really don't know how I stand on, you know, I'm, I'm trusting that, that my paperwork is sufficient to release it to you all, but I'm, I'm a little nervous about it, you know. Ray may be an uncommon man, unafraid, to stand before you. I'm the common woman who doesn't really want to have, get in trouble with the sheriff's office.
Kind of looks like a pretty nice menu to me, actually.
It, it, it is, I would think it would have a lot of appeal to the inmates.
Well, they, they're in jail for a purpose, though. It's not, it's not, they're not eating at the Hilton.
Right. But, the other thing I would just suggest, because this is my background, when the sheriff struggles to have enough correctional officers there and staffing, if you can appease them with food and, and it promotes better behavior, I would use that as a tool. Because I can see multiple instances where if there was misbehavior, guess what? Instead of, you know, chili cheese fries, we're going to have creamy liver on rice. You know, I can just see that as, you know, I don't believe in using food as, as a punishment, or a reward, or we shouldn't, but it happens. So, so there's, there's some finer points in all of this that really only the sheriff can speak to and, you know, I don't know.
Well, and the other thing is also, how much is wasted? How much is thrown away? If you had liver and rice, how much of that is going to get thrown away? If I can ask you a quick question about this menu, what was the fortified drink?
It was a sugar-free beverage that is vitamin fortified. I would call it sugar-free, I can't say Kool-Aid, but I just did, to make it clear to you. And it's fortified with vitamin D for the lack of sunshine, and I think C and zinc for, I think it's specific to prison populations. I didn't get to see that much. I was only there for an hour and a lot of effort went to making things that, I still wrote a 20-page report after an hour.
I remember getting your email seven months ago.
I, I wonder, they probably only spend pennies on this beverage to be true, or to be accurate. And my guess is it's sort of like a, an insurance, like a vitamin pill might be problematic. This is geared to jail populations. I don't know what the waste on it is. I have no idea what it tastes like. There are a lot of people who do not do well with sugar substitutes where, you know, I don't know if that creates medical issues for some. It's diarrhea.
And it could, it could, yeah.
Are you hinting that it's not good to deep fat fry these tater tots and stuff?
Well, you know, I worked with school meals for a long time, and when they pulled the deep fat fryers out of schools, the kids sure were disappointed.
Well, yeah, I think people, that's why McDonald's stays open, because they have french fries.
Well, you know, it's, oven baking isn't quite the same. And that just gets to, you know, back in the budget process, you were asked to consider expenses for kitchen equipment. And, and those are the, the decisions you all make. I think, you know, if you're surprised by the menu, that, you know.
Looks pretty good to me. I'm pretty impressed. That's quite a menu.
Well.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Karen.
What do you think, Dave?
It's not brand new, is it? No.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jim Vint. I live at 1115 Andrew Avenue, our fair city, and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Two weeks ago tomorrow, there was an article in the Selina Journal concerning Committee to Review Jail Population. So, there was one paragraph in here I'd just like to read. Dropping the title Commissioner referred to only as Smith. Smith said the county commission needs to be prepared to fund programs with the idea of lowering the number of people that are locked up. And so, I'm here to say that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of investing money in that, even if it is more expensive at first. I think it would be penny-wise and pound-wise also to have any kind of program that, even, even if we, even if we just try it and it doesn't work, I still would rather see that money invested in whether it's pre-trial supervision, or, you know, whatever it takes. I think we, I think it's incumbent upon us to see if we can lower the number of people locked up and the number of people, locked up the first time and the number of people being locked up repeatedly.
Annie's here now, too.
She'll talk a little bit about that.
But I want, I want you to know, this all started drug court even before Gemini came on. It's been a three-commission. It's not new. It's been going on and we're just trying to add to it. And, because we see it's working, and it is working very well. Now, in some other counties, it didn't work. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And so, you know, yeah, we can try it, and if it doesn't work, you don't waste the money. But it's, what we've done so far is working, so let's try some more. And that's where this commission's getting something done with Annie.
Thanks, Jim.
Your point's well taken, that you can spend a few dollars now and save a lot of dollars later if you keep people from coming back in.
Yeah, even if it costs more at first, even because we'll have the high jail rates now, that's probably not going to drop very fast, but it's going to take an investment to get to start down. Am I correct on that? Thank you.
Would you state your name again, please? I didn't get your.
Jim Vint. V as in Victor, I-N-T.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
We'll move back to regular business. Item number one.
It's Request for Action 187-15, Memorandum of Agreement with Clinical Associates PA with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning. I reviewed this with you a couple of weeks ago in a study session, but this is just to clean up the state. We've been using this Clinical Associates PA for years for our sex offender treatment, psychosexual services and evaluation and risk assessment. So, we've been using them. They're housed out of Kansas City, but they come into the location that you need them to provide the services. So, they were just asking that everybody across the state of Kansas, Community Corrections, parole, do a memorandum of agreement because they offer so much services at all levels of the system. So, we have put together the memorandum. It's been in front of Mike Montoya for approval. I'm seeking commission approval to sign this memorandum and return to them. There'll be no changes, and if commission approve, no budget impacts. Staff services and staffing will remain the same.
Questions? Public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agreement with Clinical Associates, RFA number 187-15, the memorandum of agreement as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
It's a motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Item number two.
And it's Community Corrections Update, again with Annie Grievous.
Thank you. August and September, average daily population August was 505, 36 cases assigned, 36 closed, for a total of 577 served. In September, it was 509, 39 cases assigned, 27 closed, for a total of 575 served. The advisory board met on September 17. Primary business included a director's report on some juvenile and adult populations and discussion on staff field shirts. We had had previous discussion and approval from the Department of Corrections to purchase staff field shirts for when they go out into the field. It used to be back in the day, they didn't want to have notification of who they were. Now, they kind of feel it's a little safer. We carry badges and, and mace and, and radios. So, there's a lot of identification done now, and so, they would feel comfortable having it in a shirt. The board did table this discussion for further review and policy because they were concerned about, they wanted to see a policy on purchasing, appropriate use of the shirts and return of the shirts once the staff member left, which is all good things. The subcommittee just did not think about those things. So, we will meet and develop those policies and submit again to the full board. Drug court gave a presentation on the activities and the most recent graduation updates, and I wanted to tell you, I don't have the graduation date, but we have eight slated to graduate in our next graduation, which I think is December or January, but don't hold me to that. I'll get it to you. But eight. So, that, I get so excited when I talk about those clients. Under the Kansas Department of Corrections, we had three action items which have all been approved by commission and forwarded on to the Department of Corrections, but the adult carryover budget, the juvenile carryover budget, and the adult outcome report. Again, they all met the requirements of DOC. We met the outcomes and we met the timeline and commission's approved prior to due date. Our next board meeting is November 19. The subcommittee met on September 15, and we did not meet in October, and we meet again in November 10. Department of Corrections, two adult year-end documents were completed, as I stated above. The carryover budget and outcome report, the carryover budget was in the amount of 447,367,01, and our outcome report did meet all the requirements for FY 15. So, both documents were approved and submitted. I attended a director's meeting in Topeka. New quality assurance work is coming from Department of Corrections and reviews will recur, occur from the KDOC desk. They're going to utilize our state system and go into client files that staff are responsible for and do audits from their desks, instead of having to come down and pull the files themselves. It's been going on on one side of the services. Now, they're going to adopt it on the other side. It's, it works. It's not an issue. So, we'll continue to make sure that we're working on meeting all our outcomes and are ready for those audits. KDOC staff, staff met with the director in Selina to review the fiscal audit results, and we should be getting something soon in November on, on the audit. Under juvenile services, we have one year-end document, carryover budget of 178,530,62, all been approved and forwarded. There was nothing on the juvenile services side at the director's meeting of any interest. Juvenile service staff has not met with us prior to the physical audit, and I will be making some, addressing some changes and concerns in my comments to them. And then, just miscellaneous, October, all physical policies were reviewed and updated. So, we got that done and in line with the new fiscal guidelines. Staff attended the talks, Selina, regarding programming and services in the community with the intent to reduce prisons, persons entering jail or prison. And Michelle Stevenson and I will be attending the Neighborhood Accountability Board training in November. Staff changes recently included, we lost Andrew Pellant. I think I discussed this with you. Great officer, great person, but he wanted to move closer to his family. So, he is working in Geary County, where they lost their drug court, I might add. So, he left us, and we hired David Irving, and you already been addressed with that today. So, he starts November 9. We actually promoted an officer, or not promoted, but moved an officer from juvenile that wanted to be in drug court. He moved over Brian Vesser, and we hired David Irving to replace him in the juvenile side. And then, the Justice Assistance Grant that I applied for to fund the drug court officer was fully approved. I got notification a few weeks ago, and Brian Vesser will be funded with those grant dollars. And that's it.
The, the guy that's coming to work in November?
Yes.
What type of education do they have, are required?
Everybody has to have a bachelor's. Some have beyond that. And then, they have at least 40 to 60 hours of training in addition every year they're employed by Community Corrections. I believe he has a bachelor's.
And plus, he's had a lot of training and has prior.
Correct. He worked almost two years in McPherson Community Corrections. So, and he did both adult and juvenile. So, he's met all their training requirements at the state level. So, he'll be a real benefit to us because he'll hit the ground running.
And his starting rate will be, we voted on it, around 17 something an hour.
I think it was 1762.
And yet, a person can go to work right after school and get some jobs pretty close to that area, you know, being a, so, it's, it's not a real thankful job, is it? I mean, as far as rewarding.
No, but we need to stop saying that because I'm going to get lambasted when I get back over there.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, though, it's not a, I don't want people to think that.
Right. It's a very, very taxing, stressful job, and we probably do not accommodate with what we should to make it, yeah.
The fact that he's had this training and experience, I know he's going to, like you said, hit the ground running. What normally, if he didn't have all that, what, how long would that normally have taken him to be able to complete all that training and then?
A month.
Oh, wow. So, he's saving you a month's time.
Yeah, but he's got, he's got experience on top of it.
And the dollars on, the training is usually free, but you pay for mileage, or you pay back and forth, and you pay hotels, and you pay meals.
And that is in Topeka?
All over. Kansas City, Topeka, Wichita, wherever they're hosting it for that time.
Okay.
But he has the experience also.
Right. He has the experience in addition to that.
So, we're glad to have him.
He'll, he'll take a case load fairly quickly. We'll do a little bit of internal training, but he'll be ready to take a case quickly. It's going to be a benefit for us.
And Slane County has some great benefits for their employees, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Really good benefits, so.
Community Corrections is a great office to work in.
I've commented to you before that it's, it's taken me a while to get my arms wrapped around what, what you all do over there, and, and I appreciate your patience. But I'd never have asked you, what's the biggest challenge that you have over there?
Getting the offenders, the clients, to want better than they have. Getting them to see that there is better out there, and if you apply yourself and follow through with things, and not to give up. Because you're starting from ground zero when you work with them many, many times. And you have to work on building self-esteem and desire and everything that you would think most people already have. It's not there. So, before you're even tackling substance abuse and criminogenic thinking, you've got to build self-esteem and desire.
Interesting.
For those who've been in jail numerous times, the threat of jail isn't as strong as it should be.
Absolutely not. The threat of jail is nothing. They can go and do that standing on their heads. We now have prison dips, and for people that have not been in prison, that's effective. They go for 120 or 180 days, and we've seen some success there with those. But jail time for people that have served multiple stents?
Doesn't mean a thing.
Nothing. It wouldn't affect, it doesn't affect the way it would affect you and me.
The juveniles, it has affected them, I think, in Junction City.
The thing that changed is programming, policy and procedure. It's a completely different program.
Yeah. It's not a fun trip over there.
And I think that juveniles are receiving, and I'm not, I'm not comparing one program to another. I'm just simply saying that they have the ability, the programming and the staff and the dollars to do what they need to do. And so, juvenile youth are not, youth are not just sitting over there, biding their time. They're in programming and school and multiple other things.
They're not, they're not watching TV and having a good time all the time, either having a party.
I assume there's some of that going on, but, you know, just like any, any other program, you're going to have to allow some free time.
You ever been over there and visited?
Once. Yes.
And I'd like to mention that we're down to three this week at one time. Isn't that correct, Rita?
Junction City.
And just to even hit, that's the lowest I can, I never.
You're going to see juvenile services across the state of Kansas is changing, and they're changing their practices. And Judge Thoreau served on that committee, and we just got an update. And it's going to do a 360-degree change. And there is going to be a much less population of people in detention and in out-of-home placements. Those are your two highly, or highest cost programs for youth. And they are shifting that, and they're going to put them in services and start them at a different level. And you're going to see that reduction happen. Now, this has to be approved by legislators, so you're talking a year away before it happens. But I think that you'll continue to see a reduction in those higher-cost programs and lockdown facilities.
Well, I think our county's improved a lot since we've moved our juveniles over there, and we've saved the county a lot of money. And, and the kids aren't there all that long either. I mean, it's not like they're gone forever. Like, we've had some, we've got some of those out now.
I know my staff is, they were hesitant at first because of where it was, drive time, but they have adopted the, the philosophy over there and are very pleased with the services that the youth receive.
That's good.
All right. Is there any public comment or questions?
Yeah, I had one quick question for Annie. You kind of whizzed through the next meeting and when it is. I, I noticed that, I'm kind of aware of them, but I'd like maybe you to explain how you get there and where it is, and maybe.
How you get to Community Corrections?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would be helpful for the public to be able to attend, and the more people that we have coming to the meetings.
And one thing I forgot to say, because you've brought this up before, too, is it is on the commissioner's agenda. So, when that agenda goes out for the first of that week, when it falls into our board meeting, it is also on there. So, whoever gets that, they'll see that Community Corrections has a board meeting. So, I appreciate them putting it on their agenda, but it's always there.
Well, that is a good, that is a good point.
Yeah. I think we forgot that it's there publicly.
But sometimes, if you have directions, it's helpful.
Sure. I don't mind, and listen to these directions. November 19 noon at the Community Corrections Office. Two doors down from Paramount Bar.
[laughing]
I mean, that's the best directions I can give you.
Is that on the second floor?
Yes, it is. Two doors down, I wasn't finished. Two doors down from Paramount Bar, north, Selina, second floor. Come up the elevator, come through the front door.
All right. Thank you.
Good description. Thank you.
Could we say, two doors down from Ray's Door just as well?
I could have, but then I would have been going south. I was going north. So from the north end, it's two doors down from Paramount Bar. I like saying the Paramount Bar and I'll say it again, the Paramount Bar. And so that gives me comfort and that's why I described it that way.
I like it. All right.
Thank you very much. Go Royals.
I'm going south and she's going north.
Any other public comments? Thank you, Annie. Appreciate it. Uh, item number three.
Health department update with Jason Tiller, the coordinator for the health department.
Good morning.
Morning, Jason.
So just kind of give you a quick update. October observances that we've been working with are the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, um, where all the staff have been wearing breast cancer awareness pens, um, information on social media and such. And with the governor's new zombie preparedness month, um, which is good because it's an extension of National Preparedness Month from September. And then you get to have a little fun with preparedness in the month of October and Halloween. Uh, November observances, uh, one of the big ones that's going to be coming up in November 19th will be the Great American Smokeout Against Tobacco. Um, and then I also added World AIDS Day, which is on December 1st because that'll be before the next update. Just, uh, for your information. Of course, there's always a hundred and something other different observances that are going on, so we try to use the ones that will, we have impact or, um, affecting community. So maternal child health, they finished their first grant reporting in the new catalyst system and that's the same for all the grant, uh, grants over at the health department. Um, the new catalyst system prior to this grant year, everything had been done as far as the quarterly updates on paper, um, along with the financial affidavits and such. And now it's all in a new computer system. And they had some bugs and frustrations and the, and the system administrators are still working on a few things, but, uh, we made it through it and got everything turned in on time, uh, by October 15th. Um, and also the Celine County Paranatal Coalition, which is headed up by MCH, uh, met in, I think it was late August, uh, early September, um, to get feedback from the coalition members and look at gaps in services, um, in order to kind of figure out what kind of prenatal, either education or intervention and so forth is missing in Celine County, all across, like Celine or Salina Regional, Myer Clinic, and other, you know, places that see, um, pregnant women and children.
Jason, what was that, what were those last initials for? The SHCN?
Oops. Okay. Hold on.
Well, you don't have to go back to the page.
SHCN is the Special Healthcare Needs. So those are children that have disabilities. All right, Heartland, um, both of our Head Start, uh, Healthy Start Home Visitors have been very busy. Um, and I'm on the policy council and we've had the orientation and the first meeting. Um, I meant to bring the, the big book with me, but they've got a lot of stuff planned as far as being able to impact early education and that will have that long-term, um, effect on children and their academic and social performance. So that we will help, hopefully help keep them out of Annie's realm over there. So childcare licensing, I gave you a copy of it. Uh, Lea Montoya was asked to write an article for Kansas Child, which is a publication of childcare aware, um, on childcare, um, childcare centers and emergency preparedness. And it's a really good article, um, because she provided some insight in that article from, not coming from a preparedness background like I do, of going through some training and then kind of having that lightbulb moment of why preparedness, training in and of itself, is something that's very important. So that kind of information and being able to, uh, address that to childcare providers, um, as well, kind of helps reinforce that. So when they're making their evacuation plans and kits for the kids and that kind of stuff, um, to kind of reinforce that idea of, of being prepared is important. WIC had their state audit earlier this month. Um, they had a couple of small recommendations. I don't have those with me. Uh, the big thing I want to point out, however, is that their database information, so everything that they're collecting, they have done above and beyond as far as making sure all of the demographic information, the financial information, all of the information is captured, that's supposed to be captured. And the state wants to use, um, our database as an example for training new WIC personnel across the state of, basically as a standard of what their records are supposed to look like. Home health, um, along with our clinic and home health billing, really, the ICD, ICD-10 coding, which are the codes that are used, um, in the medical field, so that any procedure, visit, everything has an ICD code that goes with it. And since they've transitioned to ten, from nine, it was kind of a headache, uh, for a lot of people and, and some nervousness and hand wringing. But they picked it up pretty well and those codes went into effect on the first. And so far, everything is up to date and they've been, um, coding everything now with that new set. Uh, GCS is a Medicare-approved, third-party, um, organization that reviews records that are submitted to Medicare for reimbursement to ensure that they are meeting compliance. Um, out of all the, the home health agencies in Celine County, um, and each of them had five charts that were taken out of all their medical charts, reviewed by this, this company, and then were given feedback, um, about whether they were approved or disapproved. Um, our home health had five out of five that were approved. Uh, one of the benefits to that, too, besides showing the competence in their medical care, is also that if that record had not been approved, then we would have had to repaid two thousand dollars per record back to Medicare for that unapproved record. Uh, home health nurses did fourteen outreach clinics, um, in the senior residential apartments in Salina and in the smaller areas around Salina within the county. Um, and that was four more than last year. And they did about a hundred and fifty, between a hundred and fifty and two hundred high-dose flu shots aimed at the seniors, um, over sixty-five And then our home health agency, along with every other home health agency, um, has been impacted in the region because there is an overall shortage of physical therapists. So generally, when somebody comes out of, they say they've had a hip injury or some sort of injury, you know, they go in the hospital and then when they come out, they're supposed to be seen by a physical therapist who helps them regain range of motion and strength and that kind of stuff. Right now, across the county and in this whole area, there's not enough physical therapists to even fill the positions that, say, Salina Regional has. And so since they don't even have enough to fill the positions, they don't even have enough physical therapists to see all the patients that need physical therapy. And so that affects, uh, home health agencies' ability to be able to, um, affects our client business. Because if somebody calls and they're specifically looking for physical therapy and there's none available, then they go to the next home health. Right now, they pretty much will have to go down the list of home health and of each agency and, um, many of them may be on some sort of waiting list, um, or having a contract somewhere outside the county and travel somewhere else because we just don't have it here in the county.
So, so we don't have, if there's a shortage of physical therapists, we don't have physical therapists, uh, in the health department. So how are they, how are they bridging that gap if they're not certified as physical therapists? How are they helping those patients?
Well, generally, we are contracted, we, we are contracted with one or two, um, physical therapists in the county that, that work privately. Basically, they're consult, consultant type and they're, they're certified and everything. However, um, they are overwhelmed with the amount of caseload that they have. Um, and the hospital has, I want to say, I think it may be like five slots for physical therapists, but they are not able to fill all of those. And one of the, um, the, one of the factors that is kind of causing this shortage, to my understanding, is that the, um, process changed in this last year for, instead of having, I believe it's a master's, I think you have to have a doctorate now in order to be a licensed physical therapist.
Correct. I think you're right.
Because now, once the physical therapist sees them and makes their evaluation and makes a plan of care, then the, there's a physical therapist assistant which assists the person with doing all the different exercises. Then they can be able to take over from there. But without that initial evaluation, then nothing else can go forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And so that's kind of affecting, you know, the whole county and all the agencies. Uh, we had our big flu clinic over at the 4H building here a couple of weeks ago, um, between the drive-through and the, the, those that came inside, we gave about four hundred and sixty-five flu shots, um, between about eleven and six that day. Um, and then the clinic nurses all went to the immunization conference, uh, which is an annual event. I believe it was in Topeka. And there they go over what's new and upcoming on vaccinations and techniques and, and, um, billing practices for new vaccinations and codes and all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of information that keeps them up to date on regular vaccinations and the travel vaccinations that we do. Uh, this next slide you have, uh, in front of you. I printed it out separately because we were having some, uh, computer issues when I was trying to get the data before with the, the program. Um, September numbers were, still don't have yet because of trying to get some access. But the one thing that I want to focus on, I kind of talked about it this morning, is the issue with syphilis in the county. Um, and I didn't use the word outbreak this morning, but technically it can be considered an outbreak. And the reason I, that I use that term now is that in looking at the statewide data, from January to June, there was a only, a hundred and twelve cases statewide and there were none in Celine County. And now we have, um, more than ten that have been lab confirmed, like I mentioned this morning. Um, and the contact tracing and so forth is still ongoing. From my perspective in the coordinator position, we had the Live Well Healthy Food Summit back in August. Uh, we had a lot of participation across the state looking at, um, improved nutrition, uh, local sourcing, farm-to-table, farm-to-school and so forth. Uh, the health department completed personal protective equipment training over at Salina Regional, uh, which was putting on that biohazard suits and that kind of stuff. Um, and we've got a couple of pictures here coming up, too. Um, went to the Kansas Public Health Association Conference and there's such a variety of information that came out of that that, uh, is beneficial for the future. Uh, in conjunction with the Emergency Management Office and actually, I forgot to add on there, Salina Fire, we did a special needs emergency preparedness class here a couple of weeks ago over at the American Red Cross Building with, um, members from OCCK and, like, circles. Um, teaching them about emergency preparedness and their caregivers about emergency preparedness. Excellent event. Um, I'm sure Hannah will speak some more about it in her update coming up, but great event. We hope to do something else like that again in the future as well because that does take special considerations for preparedness as opposed to just the normal, um, healthy individuals, uh, when you're putting together kits and plans. And then we've had the orientation for the health department advisory council and the first official meeting will be on November 10th at four PM in conference room A at the There's just a couple of pictures from the PPE training. Uh, you can see where they're putting the suits on. It's kind of a detailed process of doing and putting that stuff on to make sure that you're protected. And it's also something, too, that after a couple of hours of being in that, you're going to go through a lot of equipment and through personnel because it's basically two hours in a rubber suit and, and can't get out of it, can't eat, can't drink. And if you get out of it, it's a whole different process. So it definitely is a labor-intensive process. Then we've got a couple of pictures there, too, from the flu clinic. One of them is one of the home health nurses giving a flu shot during the drive-through flu clinic. And then down there at the bottom, we also incorporated a Health Fair-style information, um, that was available for the public to be able to, you know, take health information from health and nutrition and physical activity to safety to preparedness. And we will, we're planning on incorporating that more, um, into the next flu clinic next year and having it as more of a community flu clinic and Health Fair. So that we can be able to impact, besides just giving flu shots, maybe be able to talk to them about, um, nutrition and physical activity and BMI and, you know, healthier activities while we've got them there, so. That concludes my update.
All right. Very good. Questions or comments?
Can you get that all done in a forty hour, forty hour week?
No. I was just going to say, quit slacking.
They're, they're supposed to be forty hours in a work week?
Yeah. Well, you're not, you're on staff, aren't you? I forgot. Yeah. Well, we appreciate the work that you do and.
Looking forward to November 10th also.
Absolutely.
Public comment?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I just wanted to follow up on something Jason mentioned at the legislative lunch you all had. Um, the discussion centered around, um, the, the lack of funding for juvenile prevention programs, other than caps. I, my understanding is, most of that funding has dried up. In the same hour, Jason was talking about the summer food program. And coincidentally, at the federal level, there's plenty of funding for this program. It's not like it, it's that easy to do, though. The, the reimbursement of three thirty per meal for administrative or for operational costs is problematic in the sense that one day you'll have three kids, the next day you'll have fifty. Um, it, the day it rains doesn't really impact, so you can't pre-guess. So, um, the one, the point I'm trying to make is, chances are, there are ways of addressing a juvenile needs, but it's not going to come down in a nice package of money from the federal or the state level. If there are groups like Salvation Army runs a summer food program that could be doing breakfast, lunch, or snack, one of those, two of those three. Um, if it were paired with outreach activities, say with, um, um, the library or the, the rec department, um, if OCCK could help with transportation, those kind of things, a lot of different people coming in and, and working together on, on something like that could have an impact. And the part I'd like to just remind you of, with kids, they don't control the money, they don't control the transportation in the household. What they need are multitudes of assets within the community they live in. So the school's an asset, the church is an asset, the parks may be an asset, family and friends are assets. But once we know, or we all know that, you know, especially in the teenage years, you can have problems getting along with your folks. You can have problems getting along at school, those kind of things. So the kids need other, other, be it's, you know, rec programs or 4H clubs or scouting, or those kind of assets to keep them doing well. And the key thing about that is that a lot of those things are decentralized. We live in a time where we've centralized the library, we've centralized the functions of the health department to a large degree, those kind of things. Because we're dealing with kids, we might need to think decentralized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I had a couple of quick questions for, uh, Jason.
Yes, right.
Okay. Uh, you were talking about, uh, syphilis. Uh, there's been some cases detected, but none in Celine County?
No. What I was saying was that compared to the first half of the year, the first half of the year, according to the data from KDHE, is that there were no cases of syphilis in Celine County. But now, given the, the number of cases that we have, that does classify it as an outbreak because it's, it's greater than what the normal rate would be, which had been zero.
And what is it now?
Now it's, now it's, um, a little over ten that have been lab confirmed.
Okay. Uh, the next question would be, to detect syphilis, you need to do a blood test. Um, is that cost for that test borne by the health department?
No. The state lab in Topeka does the testing and they cover the cost for it.
So if someone wants to come to your office?
Right. If they think they have been exposed. Right, if they think they have been exposed or have gotten syphilis or anything like that, they come in. We do a history and they take their blood, get the testing done, and then treat appropriately.
So the Health Department does actually draw the blood, then?
Yeah.
And then sends it off to the state? Okay, well, thank you for your update today. I had another issue here as far as there's a update list for all the departments. And I haven't seen this list, but I know that during these updates, you know, there is public comment, which I believe is okay. But the Health Department, Planning and zoning, Community Corrections, Emergency Management, Roden Bridge, OCCK. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I haven't heard anything from the Commission on Aging or the Celine County Conservation District. Are those going to be, and this would be directed at the Commission, are those going to be kind of next on the list?
I'm not so sure. They've come before, haven't they?
Well, they were here just a few months ago, but the thing is, Ray, we write these checks to these people. We don't write the checks to Salina Aging. They're, like the Airport Authority, they are their own. So they don't come as often as the ones that we are responsible, isn't that right, Rita?
That's correct. All of them have been given an opportunity to come.
And they, and she did come, Mrs. Eccleberry, just a few months ago.
Yeah, she was here not too long ago.
But we don't bring them in every month because they're not, we don't, we don't pay them, they're not, they're not, we don't appoint their board members, they appoint their own board members.
So it's an invitation only? I mean, if they decide not to come, they're not going to come?
Anytime we've asked them to come, they've come.
The allocation agencies have a right to say whether they're coming or not. They're asked to come and if it's not convenient for them at that time, they may ask for a delay, but they...
I know Leslie at the Department of Aging, though, enjoys being over here, so I'll mention that at my next board meeting and see when she can come. The other one I'm not, the other one I'm not very familiar with.
She was here just a few months ago.
Yeah.
I don't think they've ever come, the...
Conservation District.
Since I've been here. So, you know, if they'd like to, that'd be fine, we'd love to...
I attended one of their meetings over at Baird's one in recent months and they, they just flat said, "We ain't coming." And so I'm thinking, they're going to decide not to come on their own when the Commission supports them?
I think Commissioner, I think Commissioner Guile serves on that board as well, is that correct?
Yeah, that's true. But he brought that up in the meeting and the chairman decided, "Well, we don't have time, we're not coming." And so I'd like to clarify if there's an issue about whether it's convenience or whether they just decide they have, don't have the time or what.
They're more than welcome to come.
Okay, well, maybe you should send them a invitation in writing.
All right. Yeah, Jim can, we'll have Jim forward that the next meeting, that'd be fun.
And last year, the first year I was on, I was on that board. And their meeting day was the same time that we met here and I never could go. It was, you know, and they wouldn't change it and we couldn't change ours, so I never attended one meeting because we used to meet every afternoon.
Well, that has changed somewhat here in...
I know, but I'm just saying, Jim has been able to go lately, where before we've never, we were never able to attend. So they may kind of be used to, it's just like OCCK. They come, but we don't even on their boards.
Well, that's a good point.
We don't have a board member.
That's a good point.
And I think Jim has been attending those. They're at 1:30 on Tuesdays. And like Commissioner Price mentioned, I think we've been done early enough that he's been able to attend them. So maybe now that they see that we're attending their meetings regularly, we should offer the invitation again for them to come.
And they do have, they do have a meeting that they've invited the commissioners to out at, when they have their...
Their annual?
Annual meeting out at Webster, whatever, the center.
So is the public invited to that meeting?
Well, if there's three or more commissioners there, then you are allowed to come. Now, whether they want to feed you, that's a bit...
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, if there's three commissioners, it's on the agenda and you'll be there.
Well, wait a minute. I've attended meetings where there's been one commissioner, Jim Guile.
Yeah.
That's a public meeting.
Well, I'd say you're allowed...
If they're going to show up at the Webster Center, one commissioner qualifies.
Yeah, I'm not saying you aren't, Larry, but if there are three, you definitely are, you know that.
I'm trying to make the point that it's not necessarily, has to have three commissioners.
That's not our decision, that's their decision. And I don't think they'd have a problem with it.
No, I can't speak for them either, but most annual meetings, especially of an organization like that, they are open to the public, if I'm not mistaken.
But they do have a list of people they invite that they feed.
Correct, correct. Correct, I think anybody can attend to listen. They're not, like Commissioner Price said, they're not an invited guest, but I think the public is welcome, if I'm not mistaken.
If it's an open meeting, why does the public need to be invited? They just need to show up.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sure you can.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four.
It's Resolution 15-2177, Celine County Committee for Reducing Jail Population Bylaws. And have report by Rita Diester, our county administrator.
The county commissioners had put together the bylaws for a, for reducing jail population. And the main responsibilities in the bylaws for this, this committee is assist Board of County Commissioners in assessing strengths and gaps in the Celine County jail system and help develop strategies to meet identified needs. Review alternative programs or practices that may decrease jail populations and keep communities safe. Advocate support for the development and implementation of effective mental health programs and services in the jail. And develop recommendations relevant to existing and proposed jail legislation. Be aware of and familiar with the various funding sources which support programs and services for the jail. And research and recommend methods in similar jails where resettledism and inmate numbers as a percent of population is low, lower. And the final one is to identify and recommend ways to encourage current programs that support the above objectives.
Couple of thanks here. First of all, Jason, thanks for half of this bylaws since you had just gone through it a couple of months before. Thank you, Rita, for changing the front. Another thanks is, I know all the commissioners are very supportive of this, but a special thanks to Commissioner Smith for getting this started. So looking forward to appointing the members and looking forward to starting to meet, so thanks for everything you're doing.
Do we want to mention, it is a little bit different from the Health Department, so do we want to mention what the board will consist of? It's in the bylaws, but do we want to publicly mention that?
Go ahead.
Just for the viewing public. We did use those bylaws from the Health Department, so, but just tweak the wording a little bit to fit this board. There will be nine members total with seven voting members, two ex officio. We are looking for representatives in the following categories: county attorney, judge, community-based organizations, school and school, school or school district employee, community health-related coalition, business community, faith community, racial, ethnic, population, community mental health, citizen-at-large, legal profession, and possibly a former inmate who is a productive member of society. That would be a great one to have on the, on the board. We are going to have, or is it already on there? Once we approve this, it'll be on our board, I mean, on our website?
Website for people to sign up.
Expression of interest?
We actually do have it already, the description on there and the interest form has been changed. So if you approve it today, it's ready to go.
Okay, we encourage everyone to fill one out if they're interested in serving.
Questions, comments, before I open this up to the public? Is there anyone like to speak on this issue?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I emailed, I think, all of the commissioners as well as the affected department heads on, on October 25th. Did you receive that email?
Yeah, we have a new list of our email addresses.
So maybe you didn't?
I did, but I actually am changing mine to one that I see a little bit more often.
I heard that, so...
So, you know, you might, we might make that public that it's going to be on the website where they can get our phone numbers and have better access to us, is that correct?
Right, we will get it posted as soon as we get out of the meeting.
Soon as possible, yeah, thank you.
So we're going to get that changed, it seems like it's...
Some of us read certain emails more than others.
I read my home email much more where it's been better.
And I read my business one more than my county.
First, let me say, I think the idea of the commish, or of the committee is excellent and I think it's long overdue. I think the purpose of the committee probably will need to be tweaked as people get, or as the committee starts meeting and finding out what they can or cannot do. I would highly encourage that membership of the committee include someone from law enforcement, the Salina Police Department, Kansas Highway Patrol, US Marshal. They may have some unique insights. If you're dealing with an outbreak from, of people using marijuana from Colorado, the way you address that with jail population might be different from how you'd address it with a meth cooking problem. We're hearing a lot this week about human trafficking, might tie in with the syphilis outbreak. Yeah, in that case, I'd almost suggest that that's a population of males who are, primarily males seeking sexual services from women. That might be a good people to put in jail for a little bit of time. But I would just highly encourage with membership that you include someone from law enforcement. I think you have to keep in mind that when you put the county attorney on as a member or a judge or lawyers or law enforcement, just like the sheriff and the county commissioners, a lot of them are bound by statutes that you can't sit in a group and vote to change. They're still bound by statutes. So I think that changes the makeup of the committee. Keep in mind, I think the court schedule is really, calendar is really tight. And so they become, I think, I think it's crucial to have a judge and county attorney involved, but they don't have many options. And they're booking one to three months out. I would suggest a different way of structuring, yes, the faith committee, you do want a representative from them. But I'd suggest things like maybe going to the Salina Ministerial Association and asking them to appoint someone. So you have a little bit more buy-in. And I think that could hold true with the Celine County Bar or United Way as a community organization, that's just an opinion. Question, does the city have anything to say about overcrowding, jail overcrowding? There were, I remember John Blanchard specifically at the second Talk Salina meeting wanting the city to have input. I just received an email from Jason Gage, it was written today at 9:54 AM about this issue. And he said that he certainly agrees that having representation from an entity that provides most of the jail business is a pretty good idea. With that said, we know this is a decision of Celine County. So that's just something extra. I kind of support the idea that the county attorney and judge serve as ex officio offers, officers where they don't vote. I would suggest that the public be allowed to have some input at each meeting. I, in talking about the meetings, again, public input, and then under unaddressed items, I put the issues about jail confidentiality. Or maybe really, I think on this topic, you really need to do data-driven decisions. You need to look at the financial pieces of what you're going to do. I think you need to look at actual numbers. As I've tried to pull things together from the jail bookings, I don't get a sense, I can't tell the racial, ethnic mix of some of the clients or the inmates involved. I can't tell what their education levels are. There's all kinds of information that you all may want or might be important to this discussion. And you might want to set some things up a little bit differently to deal with that. Because out of confidentiality concerns, even the menu is considered, at the jail is considered confidential. So, so I really think it's, it's very appropriate to have started using with the Health Advisory Council's bylaws as a draft. I hope I've given you some things to think about. I'd suggest maybe taking, you know, I'd suggest more discussion on this topic or involving, maybe letting others comment, the county attorney and the judge and those involved. I'm just, I'm just someone who watches all kinds of things and, and all I can do is say, "I think this committee is tasked a little differently than the Health Advisory Council."
I'll, I'll address your first point and it's, your point's well-taken about the makeup of the board. But let's remember that it says, committee representatives can come from any of the following. It does not say it has to, so there might not be a county attorney, there might not be a judge. Your point about the city manager, we'll take that upon agreement, too. And so I didn't want you to, because this is very similar to what we did on the Health Department. It was just, you know, here's some ideas of maybe some people that would be helpful. But it does not say will come from, it says can come from. So I think that that takes care of a lot of your, your concerns. And I also think that, you know, just like anything, I mean, you get nine people together and, you know, the direction may change. And that's the, you know, that's the beauty of being on a board.
Right.
You know, we're not going to necessarily say, because, you know, they're an advisory board coming to us, we don't want to tell them, you know, what to do. So, you know, they might, they might as a group come up with some different ideas, and I'm hoping so, too, so.
And the bylaws do allow them to have impact back into changing the bylaws involving you in that process and vice versa of if you feel you've got a committee member who's just not contributing, you can find a way to let them go. So there's protections both ways in that, it's fluid.
All right, very good, thank you very much, Karen. Any other public comment?
Under Article III under Members, and I think you've already kind of addressed this issue somewhat. The committee shall consist of nine members. And it goes on to say, and can come from any of the following categories. It has 12 options under the categories. Karen just mentioned about six more categories that could be under that part of the Article III in Members. And I'm, I don't know, I just see it as a ambiguous number. It could mean anything. If you want to get a little more concise with the approach, make better choices or however you want to do it. I'm just pointing that out.
I agree, thank you.
At least we got the ball rolling.
Yeah, I agree. All good points, all good points. Any other further comments, questions?
A representative from the Police Department we didn't say, and that's a good point.
Right. You know, in the end, I think that this is just, I guess I get back to the can because it's not really tying any of our hands about who we can appoint. We're still asking all the public to help fill out forms, or help, to fill out forms and give them to us. So I certainly won't just look at this and say, "You're not part of this group and therefore you're not eligible for it," so.
And plus, they can attend the meetings and give input, people can, too.
I guess maybe we could amend that sentence to read, can come from any of the following category, but not limited to. And then if you wanted to add law enforcement in there now, you know...
You know, the other way, the other thing is look at it totally opposite, just take it out.
Take what out?
All of them, I mean, we'll look at any, I mean...
Oh, well...
It gives us something to start with.
Start with, all right.
Yeah.
If you'd like to make that change, then that's fine.
I, I will. Do you, do we, do we move to approve them first and then amend them?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'd suggest that you approve the resolution first. It's not on here, but to prove, because your resolutions are establishing the council, start off. And then secondly...
The bylaws?
The bylaws, then.
Okay.
If you agree with that, I, I just, I think you need to approve the resolution... I just, I think you need to approve the resolution first.
All right, well, let me do that too. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number 15-2177 to establish an advisory council for the Saline County Committee for Reducing Jail Population.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes four to zero.
And then do I amend that first, or do we, can I do that all in one motion?
Commissioner, I think in your motion, if you say you, to approve the bylaws and then amend Section 1, however you want to do it.
Okay, I can do it all in one motion.
I would say that.
See why I want that parliamentary class? Parliamentary class?
November?
No, December 1st, I think.
December, yeah.
Can't get here soon enough. Okay, so Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the bylaws, hang on. The Saline County Committee for Reducing Jail Population bylaws established by the resolution, amending Article III, Section 1, to read committee representatives can come from any of the following category areas but are not limited to, and adding law enforcement as one possible category.
Further comments?
Did I mess that up, Ray?
Commissioners, you need a second on that.
Well, hang on, did I need to, did I not say that correctly?
Hold on, let's get the second first, and then I'll open it up to public comment. We have a motion and a second, and it's appropriate time to open it up for public comment.
Of course, I'm not a parliamentary either, but, you know, my point is, they say not limited to, and then you put the law enforcement in there. Why not just change the 1 through 12 to law enforcement? Or include all the things that Karen mentioned, you know, the KHP, the sheriff of the city, public input, you know, all of these things. I mean, it gets messy then.
I know it does, but I, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think...
It just keeps getting messier.
Yeah, it's going to get, we couldn't stop doing it if we just kept going. We'd have to think of something else.
Yeah, and that's why I said, but not limited to. I think that's just kind of...
I think maybe just leave out law enforcement, not limited to, just leave that law enforcement part out.
I'd kind of like to have law enforcement.
I think it's important.
Well, just include in the 12, or make it 13.
Well, we actually basically did, didn't we?
Yeah, I just did. I just did. That's what we're adding into the bylaws as one of the categories.
Are you a lawyer?
Are you?
Are you?
I'm comfortable here. Well, there is a motion and a second. Any other public comment?
I can accept that part, what has been discussed. I would also just ask Article 5 under Meetings, Section 5, all meetings and proceedings of the committee or subcommittee are open to the public. I would just like that it include something that says, and they will be given an opportunity to comment because that didn't happen at the Health Advisory Council, it didn't happen at the Lunch with Legislators. And I hope you have a sense that we will try and be responsible in how we make comments.
And I guess, I guess my comment, back to that, is, you know, everybody doesn't serve on those committees. It's not that you have to do that. You can't, you know, go to the Red Cross or whoever too, and just, you know, having a seat at the table is important. And so I don't feel comfortable saying to this committee that they have to do it. You know, we could mention it to them, but I don't think it needs to be in the bylaws.
And I have to agree with that. I was going to say, I think we need to leave that up to the discretion of the chair of the, of that committee and decide. Maybe he'll allow, he, she will allow public comment at one meeting, but maybe at another meeting, it will be so full of information or they've got an agenda to meet that they may not have to... In that particular instance, I highly would hope that the public then would contact the board members or send emails with your questions and whatever to be brought up at the following meeting.
And that's where having access to your email addresses helps a whole lot.
Baby steps, baby steps.
We're getting better.
I do appreciate the consideration on this topic, so thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes four to zero. Thank you for all the comments. Item number five, actually.
Five, yes, item five, approval of county commission minutes for the week of October 20, 2015.
I'd move that we approve the minutes for October 20th, 2015.
Second?
Second.
So motion and a second, is there any public comment? Bring back the commission for action. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission at this time? Are there any other announcements? The only other announcement I think that I'd like to make is we will reconvene upstairs at 1 o'clock for meeting number three. You got announcements, sir?
I guess the announcement is that Mr. Smith has been giving his, under other business, like an agenda item, and he's making comments that the public has no ability to respond to. And I think that, it's my belief, that if you're going to allow him to do that, you should allow the public to, with the same courtesy.
The public has the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to respond, and you can respond at the next one. And that's the, you know, decision of the chair on this one, and there'll maybe be a new chair in January, and you can bring that up with them.
Well, how do we know what he's going to say, so you have a response?
Well, you'll have...
You can't do that.
Bring it up the next week.
You can't do it before.
That's true, all right.
So...
Any other announcements that would like to come forward today?
I would like to, Rita, this is not a quote, this is a unanimous decision by the Supreme Court in 1892. Unanimous decision declared America a Christian nation. And then they comment significantly, "The US Supreme Court cited dozens of court rulings and legal documents as precedent to arrive at this ruling. But in 1962, 1962, when the Supreme Court struck down voluntary prayer in schools, it did so without using any such precedent."
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned for 45 minutes. Thank you for attending.